Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order of the Sacramento City Council and the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency to order. If the clerk could please call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Here.
Councilmember Loewy?
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilmember Maple?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vang?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Gata?
Here.
And we expect the mayor momentarily, Madam Clerk?
Correct. That's correct.
Very good, very good. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's see, I'm going to go over here and Councilmember Talamontes, do you mind joining us in the, or leading us in the land acknowledgement and salute?
Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanom people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Patwin-Wintune peoples, and the people of the Wiltunranteria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing together, to gather together today, in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you.
Now salute. Fledge?
Aye. Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good.
And Mayor and Vice Mayor, we do have Councilmember Valenzuela participating remotely, so I believe she has a comment.
Yes, thank you, Clerk. Since I'm still positive for COVID-19, I elected to stay home, so I don't spread the love, so thank you for being able to participate today, Mindy.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. So Mayor, we move to the consent calendar?
Yes. Excuse me, just give me a moment to get my bearings here. Good afternoon to everyone. This is the meeting, of course, of the Housing Authority and the City Council. The City Council sits, of course, as the Housing Authority. We begin with a consent calendar. There are two items. Do members have any questions or comments or?
Hold on a second.
Moved and seconded. Do we have a public testimony?
Mayor, I have no public comments on this, but since we do have one member virtual, we do need to do a roll call vote.
Okay, a roll call vote. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Aye.
Councilmember Loewy?
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Maple?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. All right, the consent calendar passes. We now go to the public hearings, which is the proposed budget for 2024 for the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Housing Authority Board. I am Susanna Jackson, the Chief Financial Officer for SHRA. I am here to present to you the 2024 budget, which is a balanced budget, which starts with the $398.9 million. It is a balanced budget that runs between January and December and incorporates the activity of the Housing Authority of the city and of the county of Sacramento. It includes various federal entitlement funds, local housing funds that are administered by the agency for both the city and the county of Sacramento. These new estimated revenues for 2024 are $398.9 million, which approximately 69% is from federal resources. These programs include our Housing Choice voucher program, which is our largest program, followed by public housing. I will highlight in the future, in future slides, both the revenue for the Housing Choice voucher and the public housing program. So as you can see, the majority of the agency is funded at the federal level, and therefore it's really critical that the agency really stay abreast of what is happening at the federal level, which I'm sure now we all know is a little shaky right now.
Could you please explain that?
The budget, their budget.
Oh, that dysfunctioned.
Yes.
So how will these, this be used? So our revenue sources are, include multi-year grants. So the total expenditures that we estimate for 2024 is $325.7 million. It includes 38.4 million of salaries and benefits, 24 million of services and supplies, 8.3 million for public services, 3 million in rental assistance payments, so that is the emergency rental assistance program, 2.3 for debt service, 62.4 million in capital projects, and we're estimating the housing assistance payments, which is the Section 8 program or HCV program, to be 186.4 million. This slide will show you a four-year comparison, year over year. So as mentioned, our total budget totals $325.7 million. So in total, the estimated expenditures will decrease at about 14.4 million from last year, which is mostly due to the reduction of the emergency rental assistance program as that is winding down. So briefly, I will just touch on the housing assistance payments that you will see. This reflects the revenues, expenses, and the reserves for the housing, housing assistance payments. This is the HAP that we receive. So while the agency maintains a great voucher utilization, meaning people have the vouchers, they're housed, this is really showing the increased cost of housing year over year. So the higher the utilization from HUD, the more money we receive. However, that's only half the battle. They appropriate based on a proration factor. So if they decide to fund overall, like 98% or 89%, it just depends from year to year what they decide, that fluctuation is something that we need to, again, stay abreast of. So it's important to note that moving forward, you've heard a lot about the rental assistance demonstration program as we are offloading some of our public housing to be rehabilitated under the RAD program. These will increase, so because they are vouchers, so this will increase our utilization. For public housing, excuse me, these are, again, the revenue trends for the public housing program for both city and county. You can see for 2020 was a really good year. The CARES Act money came through, and it has balanced out again now that the CARES funds have gone away. Basically, with the public housing, you'll again see rental demonstration program we will talk about as those housing units are converted through RAD, the subsidy will decrease because it is based on a per-unit with HUD. So at this time, we're going to transition to a brief video, but will be available for comments after.
Staff is saying they don't have a video? Is it embedded in the PowerPoint?
No, it was a separate file.
It should have been a separate image?
Yes.
I'm told they don't have a video, but I'm, they'll take a peek and see if we can find something.
Okay.
Do you want to take comments?
Let's take comments, and we can come back to the video. Do we have public testimony?
Mayor, I have no speaker slips in chambers and no hands raised on Zoom.
Councilmember Kaplan, please talk slow.
I will attempt to, Mayor, not built-in attorney training. So federal budget, as the mayor so kindly brought up, has a big impact. November 17th is a key date. What happens to your budget if the federal government doesn't so kindly kick it down the can?
You want me?
Yeah, go ahead.
I can go ahead and answer that. So in the event that there is a closure, and the federal government does shut down, there's no continuing resolution, what happens is HUD, in preparation for that, has to put together a whole plan. They start to push out a lot of the funding for the next two months, in addition to the amount of reserves that they, we're allowed to keep, which is about two weeks. So if the government shuts down, we can operate for two months. After two months, then, then we would need some relief or something needs to happen. And there hasn't been a closure that actually lasted, a government shutdown, more than two months, but that's kind of the protocol of what happens. But there are a lot of things that we're working on that really come to a screeching halt because there is no one there to make sure things get done.
Thank you. That's really good to know. And then one of the things when you're, I looked at the calendar year 2024 proposed budget, I think deserves a separate kind of call-out, is the housing assistance payments from our 2023 budget to our 24 budget is going up 20.6%. Can you explain a little bit more of why?
So one of the, one of the good things about the Housing Choice voucher program is that it does cover the cost of housing for our families who are out searching. And as the cost of housing increases, the amount that we pay out on our vouchers also goes up. So what you're seeing is the rise in the cost of housing within the Sacramento area that we're still able to keep pace for our vouchers, and you'll continue to see that. In addition to that, it was the same as Ms. Jackson mentioned, is our rental assistance demonstration. So these are ones that previously we were paid with a subsidy from HUD are now switching over to a voucher subsidy. So you're going to continue to see that trend up, and those are the two factors that's really pushing it up.
And can you tell me how long is it going to take to potentially transfer the systems?
So the rental assistance demonstration, that's our public housing units. We had approximately, well, we have a total of like 3,000 units. It is a long process. It will take us seven years or more. We have already transitioned 25% of the housing stock where we've been able to get into the units, we've been able to renovate them, to fix major systems. Currently, as we talk, Riverview Plaza, if you see all the scaffolding, that's another example of the complete renovation that we're doing of high rises for elderly individuals who live there. So it is an extensive process, but it is the first time that we have been able to really infuse capital into our public housing stock and do the renovations that will keep it operational for many years to come.
So one of the things that I know we had talked about earlier was our Housing Choice voucher program, and how can we expand it? So what is it going to take? Because I know the federal government gives us not full cost, but close to full cost, but we need to look to expand it. How, what are some things that we can do or what are you doing so that we can bring some more landlords online?
So really, one of the things that helps dramatically is landlord incentives. And what HUD did is they gave us really kind of a test case with these emergency housing vouchers. So that increased the number of vouchers that we have, and it also gave us resources where we could help our participants with security deposits, we could help them with the application fees. We were also given resources that we could hire navigators that would really help people find available housing. So I think it's a really recognition on HUD's part of what it takes to really lease, especially to people who are homeless and who have a lot of challenges with leasing up. So those are the types of things that really can assist voucher holders. So to the extent that we can leverage more funds, we use some of the CARES funds. In fact, remember, we started out really making sure that we could use that to, to full extent, to help people who are out there searching for housing. So those are kind of already proven methods, and to the extent that we can leverage more funds, which is what we advocate for at the national level, that will help our families here in Sacramento.
And then lastly, I just want to call out because, you know, I really appreciate the federal government giving us more money for our emergency rental assistance payments, but we are basically seeing it being wiped out from last year to this year. There's only $3 million left in the budget. Because we all talk about with our unhoused, it's better to keep them in than once they're homeless, finding space for them. Is there anything that we could potentially, besides advocating our congresspeople, are you hearing that HUD understands, like, this is such a great program, and seeing less money go to it is, it's harder, because then it, it comes on us and how we do that, I'm not sure, but I do want to make sure it's called out that the federal government is removing a significant amount of funding.
Yes, it is. And those are funds that came from the Department of Treasury, and it was a recognition of what was going on during the pandemic, and it kept so many families in their homes. We helped over 16,000 families between the city and county with rental assistance, and it is something that unfortunately is going to a close.
And we did help 16,000 families, and because we ran out of the money, there was a remaining wait list of how many? About 10,000 families, right? About 10,000 families. So you, your questions illustrate the point, which is there's tremendous need. Okay, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, but those were all, thank you.
If I turn it to Council, Vice Mayor Gata, just, I'm going to, breaking news, the House heads towards passing bill to avoid shutdown with Democratic support. So that is, my great timing. So that is, and the Senate, and, and the Senate Majority Leader, Chuck Schumer, has indicated that they will pass the House bill immediately, and at least for now, will avoid a government shutdown, and at spending levels that do not involve cuts, not increases, but involve cuts. So that's good news. And then I just, as long as I have the floor, and I'll turn it over to Eric. You know, your point about federal funding for housing, and this is what we're talking about here today, I don't want to understate how important this is. I can tell you that the U.S. Conference of Mayors, this is quickly becoming the number one national agenda item. And, you know, we always mark different days in history, and this day that I'm about to say will never be marked, but I'm marking it right now. It was the day that the Build Back Better bill had $350 billion in it for housing, for states, for cities and counties. And because of the slim Democratic majorities in the United States Senate, Joe Manchin being the, the one calling all the shots, one day in 2021, I believe it was, that $350 billion went out of the, went, went out of the bill. If that had stayed in the bill, do you know how much different this conversation would be here today? It would be very, very different. And so there will hopefully be other opportunities in the year and years ahead to make housing, 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 a national infrastructure priority. Infrastructure is not just transportation and water, it is housing. Thank you for allowing me to get on my high horse and.
Give us breaking news.
Say just that and give you breaking news. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. That, sure, Senator Manchin was watching that here. So I think the, the, the only question I, I really have, first of all, you know, thank you, I very, you know, I want to also credit the staff here, and also wanted to credit former Councilmember Carr and Councilmember Hanson for joining my effort to, when we first had the CARES Act funding, to start looking at setting aside some of that early money, that early adoption, you know, and the Sacramento Associate, Sacramento Act, the area congregation together for, you know, bringing to light the need for housing assistance. I was proud to work with them, and then get the, get going on a city-county partnership. The, the only question I really do have for Director Dozier and your team is, you know, this, this budget, you know, seems to be, you know, a very uncontroversial one today, but in the next year, I think some of your collective bargaining agreements are going to be, come due. We're going through that issue right now on the city side. We'll be taking that up when that comes due, but how are, and I looked at your budget here, and it, I mean, they're understanding the decrease because of the federal funding that's moving out, but how are, how are you prepping in this budget to that, that, that collective bargaining and, and time for those contracts that are coming up next year? Because I'm assuming that the same issue that's happening in all agencies, public agencies, are going to put the, this agency in that same position of trying to meet the demands of the community, the housing demands, but at the same time, at the same time, many of our employees that, that work at SHRA are at, at that also extreme edge where they're barely making ends meet on compensation. So I guess what I'd like to hear more is how does this budget set us in a position? Because we, we have a different cycle than normal cities and counties, we're a little delayed a few months, but because I think come next year, we'll be reviewing those contracts again, probably around the same time that the holidays are coming around. So I think that's a, that's a challenging time to, to do that. So maybe some thoughts on that.
So I'm glad you mentioned that. In preparation for our negotiations, because we had a three-year contract that does end at the end of next year, we're going to start much earlier. So we, instead of waiting till our normal time, are really going to front-load and start discussions probably in the first, first quarter of the year, because we understand what the demands are, we are sensitive to the fact that, you know, our residents' costs and the people who work with us are continuing to go up, and so they do need to be back at the bargaining table, and I will be coming to you in closed session, asking for those parameters. And then from the budget perspective is that we do allow, you know, some flexibility within the budget, and if it is a situation where we have to amend it, then I would come back to augment the budget to address those type of issues with our.
Great, well, thank you. That's, that's enlightening to hear that you'll start early.
Very early.
You know, unfortunately, sometimes joint powers authorities get set, set far behind the other main cities or main, you know, agencies, authorities. So I appreciate that. And then, you know, I, again, when we do go back into advocacy, obviously, direct funding for capital construction is key, right? We need that for housing, but, you know, I think when the city and the county does their federal advocacy, you know, I think we have a different, different challenge than other states, because our cost of living is higher, and the administrative percentage that's allocated for compensation for executing the work is different. I think that should be an important part of whatever the county or the city is, and I don't know how you participated on our advocacy level when the region goes out, but I think that needs to be a component of making sure that the percentage isn't equated to some of other states so that we can deliver the services we need to with also being fair to the employees of our own agency. So those are, those are my only questions, and thanks for the, answering them and those comments. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
You have a video to play if you'd like.
Oh, the video is now ready. Very good, okay.
If you'll play the video, please.
I'll move the resolution while we're waiting for the video.
Open and close the hearing, seconded by Councilmember Kaplan.
All right. It's good video?
That was beautiful.
Good music?
Wonderful video. Lots of dreams.
It's very good, very important. Out the work. Okay, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say.
Do you need to do?
Oh, we need to do the roll call, I apologize.
I apologize.
That's right.
So Vice Mayor Gata opened and closed the public hearing, and Councilmember Kaplan was the second.
Kaplan, second, yes.
So roll call, Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Loewy.
Aye.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
No comments. Yes.
Councilmember Maple.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Vang. And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, I assume Councilmember Valenzuela has a comment that will be.
I was going to comment on the.
Oh, you were? So that we, we have a little.
It's okay, I can wait till the end.
We have a little glitch, sorry about that. We'll make sure that we get that. Okay, is it, can she do the raised hand on the screen?
She can. Did you have comments on this item? We've already voted and it hasn't passed.
I know, I know that, but.
I did, no, I raised my hand, but it's okay, I can wait.
Go, you want, you can speak now, it's okay.
Okay.
Well, go.
Well, I just wanted, well, because the last picture, I mean, on Marysall Village, I just wanted to take a brief moment to acknowledge the valiant work that SHRA has been doing, not just to revitalize Marysall Village, but to bring about the critical access that is going to make those residents successful, like through the Light Rail Station. And I didn't know, I wanted LaChelle to give you an opportunity to update those who aren't on the RT board about where that stands, but also, I just wanted to thank you and your team. I was imminently impressed with how your team managed this whole process. I mean, I don't know, folks who aren't on the RT board don't know that, like, those residents couldn't get to the RT meeting because there was no transit that could get them there, and LaChelle literally chartered a bus to make sure that residents who wanted to come to the RT meeting could come to the meeting on, like, Thursday night, right, LaChelle? I mean, this was like last minute, we were like, how are we going to get these residents there? And so I guess just because it was up on the slide, I just wanted to give you a chance to update on where that is, but also, again, just to thank you and your team, and obviously the mayor and Senator Ashby and all the stakeholders who were helping try to push that part of the project to the finish line.
Thank you. If it's okay, go ahead. Yes, I appreciate you for all the work that you did also too, and really working very, very hard on, on the transit station. As everyone knows, this is something. As everyone knows, this is something that we have worked on for years and was always a part of the vision, that there would be a transit stop there. And in fact, that actually would open up housing. So we needed that transit station built so that we could continue to create more housing than we already have. So at the meeting last night, basically, the RT board said that they were not interested in moving forward with a transit stop and that they were advocating for more bus service, despite the fact that many residents came and spoke on their own behalf of what they needed, which really was a transit stop, which had been promised to the community as well. So that's kind of where we are at this particular point, but I do appreciate you, Mayor, and everyone else here who sits on the RT board, who really was very supportive of the work and advocating on behalf.
I just want to say I thank you, LaShelle, for your great work. I got numerous reports last night about all of it. And one of the striking comments was how the city representatives to RT stuck together. And, you know, people with different points of view, right, on many things showed the power of the city really sticking together. And I've heard from everyone that to a person, each of the members were eloquent in their argument and their presentation. You know, I don't want to redo the RT hearing, but I do think it is important to articulate, please articulate, why the residents feel so strongly about light rail as opposed to a promise of bus service. What the, why that promise is important to the residents?
Well, the light rail, as it is, as it stands now, goes past them. Every single day, it gets to Alkali Flat, people have to get off and walk all the way back to the development. You'll see small children with their, you know, parents holding their hand, trying to walk them through a pretty difficult path just to get back to their housing. So by having the light rail station there, it is directly across from their development, which was always the vision. It was always what we intended to have. While bus service is good, bus service is not the same as a permanent station. Bus service is dependent upon ridership and it can change at any given time. One of the things that came out in the discussion that I just want to highlight is that in talking about bus service, it would still take 18 months for us to get a bus to start serving the people there. And then that bus service is contingent upon the funding from this grant, which goes away. And at that point, then you have to start trying to figure out, how are you going to continue to fund the service for a bus? Whereas a light rail station is always there. It's never going to go away. And that's really what the residents wanted to see.
Let me say that the discussion and the debate is not over yet. There are still a lot of discussion, deliberation, and advocacy to be had here. And I'm just proud of the city and SHRA for the way we stuck together on this and Senator Ashby as well, of course, sort of led, helped lead the charge. Okay.
He's fantastic.
Councilmember Talamontes and Councilmember Maple.
So I don't have the opportunity to sit on the regional transit board. So I do want to thank my colleagues for fighting really hard for our city of Sacramento. You know, this is an equity issue. We talk about climate change. We talk about smart growth. We talk about, you know, transportation and the importance of it. And I drive down, you know, North Gate, the 160, and I pass Alkali Flats. I pass that area every day of my life. And people drive so fast, it's so dark, it's dangerous. We need to give people an opportunity to be able to take the light rail. And I guess for me, I just want to say publicly that I'm really disappointed in our partners, our regional partners, for not seeing this investment in people. And I hope that we can get this back on track because it's important for the city of Sacramento and the promises that we made to everyone living in that area. So thank you to our city teams, to SHRA, you, LaShelle, and your staff for the incredible work that you did. You know, I just found out about this last week on Thursday or Friday, and today I found out the outcome. So it's just really disappointing. And so I guess, LaShelle, just real quick so that people have more context to it, because I didn't prior to, you know, last week. Can you tell us how many people were impacted by this vote? And then also how much money was already allocated towards this project so that people have a sense of it?
So there was $23 million already advocated, 17 directly for the light rail station. And in terms of number of people advocate, those are all the people who are at Marisol. There's 400 and some odd families who live there at Marisol, and they are all directly impacted. One of the things I think was really telling, there was a petition and 50 people who signed it because they couldn't make it to the meeting. And the reason they couldn't make it to the meeting was childcare, transportation, working. You know, these are people who are really trying very, very hard to advance their situation, but were very clear about what they needed.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you. And I don't want to belabor the point, but I do sit on the Board of RT and just wanted to also thank LaShelle and your team for all the hard work. I was educated by your wonderful speech last night on the history of this project, which has been going on for almost two decades. And that's two decades long of promises, not just to these community members and as you brought up, a neighborhood, a community that has been left behind for many, many years and has been isolated because of the way that it's structured. But there is one, a couple of other things I wanted to call out for my colleagues and for whoever's listening out there. One of the things was, is the developer of the Growers District came and spoke. And they said that they have, not only what they've already put into their projects out there, but $250 million planned in development in that area, in an area that has long been neglected, that includes 500-plus housing units. And those units were dependent upon, that project is based upon the idea that the light rail station would be in there because they also were promised. And so there was a direct comment from that developer that they may not be able to move forward with what they have planned. And that is devastating to the city of Sacramento. And then on top of that, you know, we talk about transit-oriented development. There's a lot that we have going and a lot that we have planned and we want to do on this front. That it can only happen if we can keep our promises around the types of transit that we're building. I worry about the future of future projects, many of which I'd love to see in my own district, if, you know, the state or the federal government might look at us and say, hmm, I don't know. You know, you said you were going to build that before. How do we know? And we might be set back by that. And so I just, I really want that to be known publicly and that I hope that we can find a way to move this forward despite what happened last night. And just, again, really thankful for the work of our senators, Senator Ashby, our mayor, and others, so.
The last word has not been spoken. Thank you. Yeah, Sean, go ahead.
Thank you. Again, just, I am on the RT board as well, so thank you very much, LaShelle, for being here. And my colleagues, you know, you said it all. It was a very frustrating evening because we couldn't get really straight yes, no, is this going to get affected or the funding are going to get affected? But it's not over yet. You know, we made the CEO to commit that he's going to look for funding so we can push this project. And I think, LaShelle, you said something very powerful, and that is, you know, promise has been made, but we can't deliver. And that's really sad because, and as I said last night, I represent a district that a lot of promises have been made and nothing has been delivered. So residents and businesses have become somewhat weary of, you know, what elected officials are promising them. But, you know, I like to ask my colleagues that are on RT board, for us to still be united and ask for this project and push this with Henry at RT, and hopefully, we can bring it back on track. And, you know, the bus stops, it's a Band-Aid. It's not a complete solution. But I'm really hoping that before we even start this bus route, that we can find the funds and can come back to the right there. So thank you very much to you, Mayor, and a huge thanks to Senator Ashby. I know till the last second, she was trying to communicate and trying to see what she can do. And I can't say enough about her and her commitment to our region. So thank you very much.
Very good. Councilman Jennings?
Yeah, I served on the council as well, on the RT board as well. And my colleagues did a great job of advocating our point. And I am adamant that this fight is not over. I am adamant that we will not cancel the 20 years that we've worked on getting this project up and running, that this still remains the top priority for that community, a community that's been redlined and has been left behind. And we will not stop until we accomplish the goal of what we started for. So I do see the bus route as a Band-Aid that is going to help on a temporary basis. We increase the number of hours that the bus is available to take people to and from work or to and from their destination. You know, we did that. And so, and we increased the number of days that that bus is going to be available for those residents. But it's not a solution. It's a Band-Aid. And until we put the light rail station in there, we will not stop until we get that done.
Right. I think it was, even though it was after the vote, was really maybe the most important part of the discussion for this item. Thank you again to everybody. Let us now go to the next item, which is item four, and that is the loan documents for the Sequoia.
Mayor Keltz, Councilmember Valenzuela, I'm sorry.
For when? Okay.
For this one.
That's good. Councilmember Valenzuela was the first up to speak when it's time for council comments. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Whitney Hinton, program manager with SHRA. Staff is requesting final approval of the funding documents for the Sequoia project. Staff was before you on June 13th to request $3.4 million mixed income housing fund funding commitment for the Sequoia. On November 7th, the Board of Supervisors approved $2.1 million in Mental Health Service Act funds for the project, which will restrict 16 units to MJSA clients. As you recall, the Sequoia Hotel originally opened in 1910 and is located on 911 K Street. The project has fallen into serious disrepair and is critically, and is critically in need of extensive rehabilitation. The California Department of Housing and Community Development foreclosed on the property last year. HCD approached the John Stewart Company and requested that they acquire and renovate the property. The John Stewart Company was awarded $44.6 million in portfolio reinvestment program funds to rehabilitate the building. There are a total of 89 units, which includes one manager's unit. The project was awarded 100% project-based vouchers and all units will be restricted to homeless households. Substantial interior improvements will be made, including all-new kitchenettes, bathrooms, flooring, elevators, and stairwells. There will be 24-hour desk coverage, and the commercial space on the first floor will be converted to resident services offices, community room, and a computer room. Resident services and case management will be offered by Lutheran Social Services in the county of Sacramento. John Stewart Company will be the property manager. The project is scheduled to close on financing by the end of this year, with construction beginning in January. In closing, staff is requesting approval of the final funding documents for the Sequoia project, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, let's hear from the members of the public on this. If we do have any public testimony, please.
I have one hand raised. John Vignochi.
Hey, folks. Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. Thank you for taking my comments here. Definitely want to acknowledge just all the hard work that goes into these developments. It's really hard to get it to this point, especially when you're pulling together funding from HCD, from the city, from SHRA. Just commentary in the business community. I mean, if you look at the cost per unit and the cost per square foot, I mean, it's challenging to get your head wrapped around this. I mean, the opportunity cost here is pretty significant when it'd be helping two, you know, one and a half to two times as many people with the same amount of funding. Certainly, you know, I think it's obviously a good deal for the city to approve this because you're only investing 5.5 million of local funds. But overall, it just kind of shows that the affordable housing funding model is kind of, you know, arguably broken. And it's tough to be on the opposite side of a lot of the rhetoric, the nasty rhetoric that gets tossed around about developers and people in our profession when, you know, when you see this type of money being spent. Yeah, it just doesn't really leave a good taste in your mouth. It's frustrating to see this type of capital being spent, especially in a spot downtown. You know, again, I don't want to criticize people for their hard work and their good work that they're doing, but when you take a step back and you look holistically, it's just very difficult to support stuff like this. So I understand your positions if you vote for it, but without some sort of criticism or critique about how this is being financed and the cost, it's, you're missing, missing the big picture. Thank you. Have a great rest of your day.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. Thank you. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. I am thrilled, 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 thrilled to see this project moving forward. So many constituents in that building asking for repairs, so many businesses around that building asking for us to take more ownership of that space. I know it's hard for folks who don't specialize in affordable housing to understand just how intricate and how specialized the spending is. It's not like we can take this dollar and spend it on whatever. And these are service-based units. And I'm so excited because I guess I missed, how many units did you say would be mental health service units in this new school?
Sixteen.
That's wonderful. That's really wonderful. So thank you, Mayor, for all the work you did to get housing to be a part of the mental health service act work. Really excited, would love to move this item forward with all the enthusiasm, this few million dollars for this many incredible units and the transformative impact it will have on K Street is just really, really exciting. So thank you again, LaShelle, and your entire team for moving this project to this point.
All right. Thank you. Oh, boy, should I? Well, this issue about the broken funding model Mr. Vignochi speaks about, I think is, I agree with much of it. I mean, I think it, there's not enough money and the stacked financing model that SHRA, thankfully, we have experts who know how to do this and navigate it so well, it, I do think the funding model needs to be looked at. And as we've talked about, much more emphasis on innovation and we need a local housing trust fund so that we can more consistently put resources into the right kind of, the right kind of innovation. I will point out for this project, though, it is an existing building. It's like, and a disrepair. So what are we going to do? Allow it to just fall apart when you can both repair and also provide affordable housing to people with great need? So we need to change it, change the big picture, and at the same time, continue to build as much supportive and affordable housing as we can. It's a great project. All in favor?
I believe Councilmember Valenzuela made a motion, but I did get a second.
Oh. Second by the vice mayor.
And then I'll take a roll.
Let's call the roll. We got to call the roll.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Laloe.
Aye.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Aye.
Councilmember Maple.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gata.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vang.
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right, unanimous. Thank you so much. Let's go to item five.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the Housing Authority. Whitney Hinton, program manager for SHRA. Staff is requesting approval of tax-exempt mortgage revenue bonds for the 1212 Village Apartments project. 1212 Village Apartments is a proposed 75-unit affordable housing development that consists of studios, ones, twos, and three bedrooms units located on one acre of vacant land at 1212 Del Paso Boulevard. The site was purchased by Volunteers of America National Services from the Sacramento Redevelopment Successive Agency in March of 2018. VOA has applied to SHRA for the issuance of mortgage revenue bonds, and inducement resolution must be adopted by the entity proposing to issue the bonds. Inducement at this time will allow VOA to maintain the project's current maximum points for bond application. The point system is scheduled to change January 1st. The project has been awarded 19 project-based vouchers to benefit homeless households. SHRA will be recommending gap financing for this project and will return in a few months for a funding commitment and to hold public hearings regarding the bonds. Volunteers of America is proposed as the property management company and resident service provider. In closing, staff is requesting approval of tax-exempt bonds for 1212 Village Apartments project, and staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Do we have public testimony on this item?
I have no speakers on this item.
Councilmember Laloe?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, this project is in my district. It's very exciting. I think we've been waiting since 2017 for this project to get going. So finally, we are here. It's a right project for the right area, and it does. Again, thank you very much to SHRA and the hard work that you all put into it. But kind of also to just make a comment based on that previous caller, I think locally, everybody's working extremely hard. The question is, why does the system take so long to approve these very, very needy projects? You know, seven years to wait for this project to, to get finally accepted. There's something wrong with the, with the system, but that's a whole different conversation. Very proud of this project. This is going to bring a lot of excitement to Del Paso Boulevard, including two other projects that are going to go on Del Paso Boulevard. So very excited, and if there are no public comments, I've moved.
Moved by the council member from the district, Councilmember Laloie. I do have Vice Mayor Geta up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll second that item and just, you know, for when I first moved to Sacramento, I was in, I was over there off Del Paso and, you know, spent a lot of time over at Little Joe's and seeing, you know, seeing activity happening where we're going to have more people walking on that area. You know, I think it'll bring new life to, you know, the stony, for those that we used to hang out there in college. And I think being, being able to see, you know, a lot of new life happening out there. So I'm excited about this project and glad to second it.
By the way, Vice Mayor, the college students are still hanging out, I assume. College students.
Love the stony. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you. I too want to congratulate SHRA and Councilmember Laloie on this project. I get the opportunity to, to be in Del Paso Heights on a daily basis because I work in Del Paso Heights and I see the Boulevard and what needs to happen on the Boulevard. And this is a project that is, it's the right time, right project at the right time, really going to make a significant impact and a difference. And so hopefully, it's one of many more to come. So congratulations, sir.
Yep. Congratulations, Councilmember. Great, all in favor? Roll call again. Sorry.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Hi.
Councilmember Laloie.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Maple.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Geta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Vang.
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontes is on the way back. Mayor Steinberg?
Yes. Yep, she's not bad.
And Councilmember Talamontes, how do you vote on item five? Thank you. It's unanimous.
It's unanimous. Very good. Thank you so much. Good presentation. Appreciate it. We do have one item left, and that is water revenue refunding bonds. You're going to have to explain this one to us here, please.
And Mayor and councilmembers, this is a city council agenda item brought to you from the Office of the City Treasurer.
Uh-huh.
We moved it from this evening's meeting due to the capacity of our meeting.
I see, I see. So this is, again, joint meeting of the Housing Authority and the City Councils, so this is.
This is a solely city council item.
Yes.
And staff should pull up the presentation in the back. It looks like IT is in the back trying to find it if you wanted to get started.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Brian Wong, the city's debt manager in the treasurer's office. The item before you, there are two actions. One related to waiver of a portion of the city code related to agreements that are in excess of a million dollars. And the second related to the adoption of a resolution that allows the city to move forward with all the necessary actions related to the partial tender and partial refinancing of certain series of water revenue bonds. I don't know if, is the presentation available? Okay. Just wait. Given the complexity of this deal, you know, rather than kind of a typical refinancing where, you know, it's pretty kind of vanilla, you know, I put together a short presentation to walk through kind of some of the mechanics. And the rationale behind that is really some of the, the genesis behind this is really some of the changes in tax laws over the last five or six years, and that's what led to kind of an opportunity that we're looking at in front of us. Okay? Let me just kind of just run through this. All right, so really beginning in 2017, when Congress and the president passed into law the Tax Cuts, Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, it eliminated what's known as advanced refundings. And advanced refundings, in essence, when an issuer issues tax-exempt bonds, the ability for an issuer to issue additional tax-exempt bonds to refund it, that was eliminated with the passage of law, tax law, in 2017. Fast forward to May of 2020, what the city did was we issued taxable bonds, the Series 2020 bonds. At the time, when we went through with those issuance of bonds, we realized savings of about $30 million. Now, one of the things that we have in our overall city debt policy is that from time to time, we look at opportunities to look at our debt portfolio and look for opportunities to save when there are opportunities to refinance. And so the current consideration you have in front of you is what's known as a partial tender and a partial refinancing. Again, these are kind of new terms, and I want to spend a little time to inform the council of what this refers to. Again, in 2020, the city issued taxable bonds. One of the things that we're looking at now is if we were to look at, oh, perfect.
Thank you, Efren.
Thank you. All right, so kind of on the, on the third, on the last bullet here, so one of the opportunities we have is to look at refunding or refinancing a portion of the 2020 bonds. And again, keep in mind that those bonds were issued taxable. And just kind of in very general terms, the spread or difference between taxable bonds versus exempt, there's going to be a credit difference and interest rate savings. And, you know, even though you've seen the Fed take considerable action since March of last year to try and control inflation, one of the things that the benefits we have is that even if we issue tax-exempt bonds now, there could be savings to the city's water So this slide, I don't want to go through all the details, but it's really to provide kind of a, more of a details related to how the tender works. Again, this is the first time that the city has undertaken this process. And again, with a, kind of with a dissolution and the elimination of advanced refundings, one of the new opportunities that other issuers of debt are now exploring are what is known as tenders. And so the opportunity we have in front of us is the city is looking to propose to hire Goldman Sachs as, in two roles. One as the dealer manager and one as the bond underwriter. And so in the context of the dealer manager, they will be helping the city to work to identify the current holders of the taxable bonds, the 2020, to see if they would be willing to sell their bonds at today's rates with a liberal premium. And so if they're willing to do so, we would issue corresponding tax-exempt bonds to essentially kind of pay off that portion of the taxable bonds. And that creates an opportunity in terms of savings. Again, Goldman's other role would also be kind of in the traditional role where they would serve as the bond underwriter. So again, dealer manager on the tender side, and then underwriter, underwriting and issuing the, the Series 2023 bonds. This overall structure of the deal, you know, just to kind of provide the members of the council, very highly rated. So we went before two rating agencies, Standard and Poor's and Fitch, and they affirmed AA and AA- respectively, incredibly high ratings. This, this will be, again, be issued to partially refinance some of the bonds that we issued three years ago. And whatever savings are generated will be helped to, to allow the water fund to pay for capital improvements or other kind of eligible costs.
How much money will the water fund save as a result of the refinancing?
Great question, question, Mayor. So on this slide, these are just kind of estimates. And so one of the things I want to point out is, you know, in a traditional refunding deal, we're looking to refund, you know, all or 100% or nearly 100% of the bonds. Here, in the case of taxable bonds, it's a little unique. One of the things we know for sure is not 100% of the holders are going to want to relinquish their, their holdings. And the reason why that is so is, if you think about it, the composition of the holders, right? Some, some of the holders are insurance companies. They're willing to buy and hold, and they're not interested in whatever kind of premium the city is willing to offer to incentivize them to sell. But in the preliminary numbers that Goldman has provided to the city and the city's municipal advisor, they're thinking that there's about 20% of the holders would be willing to go through this transaction. And if so, that would provide estimated $5 to $5.5 million in cash flow savings to the water fund. And, you know, sometimes we get the question, why now? And so if we were to do nothing in terms of leaving the 2020 bonds in place, that $5 to $5.5 million is essentially the opportunity cost if we don't move forward with kind of the opportunity we have now. Brief schedule, if the mayor and council approve the recommendation to move forward with this opportunity, you know, the working group, including Goldman Sachs, the city, and the various other members of the working group are all poised to kind of get this done by the middle part of December. So some of the key items, tomorrow, you know, we are finalizing what's known as the invitation to tender, and we're also finalizing some of the documents related to the actual issuance of the 2023 bonds. The last two dates are kind of the critical, where it's related to the pricing and kind of consideration for the tender. And on December 19th, it's the closing date. So we will have actual results of what the water fund can be able to realize in terms of savings. Is it $5 million? Is it, did things move away from us? Are we looking at $3 million? Are we looking at $7 million? So that's where we'll have a little more certainty when we price and we understand the kind of results of the tender process. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
It's obviously, it's a very complex transaction, and I think the public, you answered the question about what the public interest here is. It's a savings, significant savings to the city's water fund. Do we have public testimony?
Mayor, I have no more, no speakers on this item.
No, let's hear from the members. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. How are you?
I'm doing well, Councilmember.
Couple of questions, just for clarity, to point it out. Why specifically are we waiving the 10-day rule?
Excellent question. So some of the documents that we have that are part of the package are basically finalized until the very last minute. So there are negotiations that go on between the city and different councils. And more importantly, if, as the schedule kind of points out, if we were to include additional item where we would have, you know, a two-week additional kind of sunshine for that, it would push the pricing and closing into early 2024. And so one of the things that kind of collectively on the city team and others, because of the interest rate volatility, we want to try to minimize the lead time, if you will, between where we are and when the bonds price and close. So it's, it's to try to get to market as quickly as we possibly can to, to reduce the interest rate sensitivity.
And so going through this process is more kind of like a direct negotiated sale?
It, 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 part of this, yeah. Part of the tender process is negotiating to finding where the holders of the 2020 bonds would be willing to relinquish. And then on the pricing side, trying to find investors that are willing to purchase some of the new 2023 bonds.
Perfect. So you may not know the answer, and I, it don't need it for today, but would appreciate just a follow-up. And it's a question I found very interesting in my, in my prior elected life as a school board member. Do we pay outside bond counsel to process this, or is this handled by our city attorneys?
We do have to pay for bond counsel fees. And the reason for that is when we issue any, when the city or any of the financing authorities issue bonds, one of the things that bond investors want is they want an opinion, right? It's related to the tax-exempt nature of the debt. And so in this case, Oric Harrington-Sutcliffe serves as bond counsel. And so whether it's Oric and the other attorneys that are involved in this overall deal, we will need to pay for.
And do we pay bond counsel based on the percentage, or are they paid hourly?
No, they, they are, in this case, they are paid based on the expected complexity of the deal. It's not based on the par amount.
Okay, just because one of the things I found was a little bit of a racket is law firms like to charge on the amount of savings or refinance versus hourly billing. So I just wanted to make sure that the city was doing, I'm pushing for more on the hourly actual cost, not how much was saved or refinanced.
Correct. So in this case, you know, for example, we have two figures kind of in the council report. So we expect to issue 26 to 27 million in a par amount. But one of the things you'll notice in the authorizing resolution, we have a cap of $85 million. And the reason why it's such a high cap is we don't really know the proportion of the tender. But to answer your question, Councilmember, Oric's fee won't increase because we're now issuing $85 million relative to 25.
Perfect. That, that is great. And then my last question, on the write-up, specifically page five of six, which is your very last sentence, and it's the only thing that causes me a little angst. It says, "The city reserves the right to potentially move forward with the issuance, even if its reasonable expectation is not met." So, you know, the time and the cost that does it, really, the cost-benefit factor comes with a 5% savings. So does this sentence mean if there's only 3% savings, you're moving forward?
So, very good question, Councilmember. So there are two kind of parameters. One parameter in the authorizing resolution, and there's another parameter where with the city's kind of reasonable expectation. And so the minimum parameter we have in the resolution is we have a 4% net present value savings. And so if we were to look at the numbers as of about two weeks ago, we're about 8% or 9%. So we're more than double that. I think that language that we included in the council report is, in the event it's below where we have in our overall debt policy, and in our debt policy, we have a general guideline of 5%. And so that's, and so to answer your question, in the discussions I had with Department of Utilities, they, I asked the question, I'm like, how, how low is your threshold, given all the work that your team has, has expanded on this deal, in order for you to feel comfortable? And they said they would be willing to go with as low as 4. And that's why in our reso, we have 4%, but our goal and our objective that we've worked on with Goldman Sachs is to maximize, is to try to try and get as much savings as we possibly can.
Perfect, and I really appreciate this because a lot of it is, how complex this is, and trying to be as transparent as possible, but doing what we need to do to save some taxpayer money and resources. So thank you for answering my questions.
Absolutely.
Really appreciate it. I'll move this item pending other discussions.
Excuse me. Thank you, Vice Mayor Geta, as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I want, I wanted to, you know, appreciate all the, the time that you all take. I know that your, your team at the treasurer's office is always looking for new opportunities, and this is another good example. And I mean, everything here that's presented seems, there's a lot of benefit, obviously having some active management in this and giving, getting us some more, more, I would say, eyes on the, on, on where the opportunities are. But, but I guess the only question that I have is, is where, when you were looking at this approach, where is the, where's the risk and the liability? I mean, is there, is there any that we should be concerned about or aware of?
So let me, let me ask a question just to make sure I understand. Are you asking for a risk specifically to the city if this is approved and we move forward?
Yeah, I mean, and just using this approach, or is this, I mean, I mean, think, again, going within outside, or is it a cost? Is it just like, hey, this is, by going and using, using this approach, there's an additional cost, but we can realize higher gains? So I guess that's, that's my, my question is, in, in, in determining this approach, what, what were the trade-offs?
Sure. So I, I think it goes back again to kind of the consideration that we had because of the tax law change in 2017. And, you know, there's been different things rumbling and different things like GFWA, the Government Finance Association, and others, and even NABL, the National Association of Bond Lawyers, of potential for some, you know, some type of form of advanced refundings coming back again. But I think the reality is, we don't have it in place now. It's an impairment to not only the city, but to other issuers. And this is really a way to realize additional savings by converting the constraint that we had in 2020 of taxable bonds and converting it, kind of converting the color of the money to exempt and realizing the savings there. But to, to answer your question, in terms of risk... But to answer your question, in terms of risks, you know, if this thing doesn't move forward, there are obviously some inherent non-contingent costs, right? So some of the council fees are non-contingent. Right. Some of our municipal advisor fees, and then rating agencies fees. But I think one of the things that in our numerous, numerous discussions we had with Goldman Sachs and Fieldman Rolap, our municipal advisor, I think there's a reasonable expectation that, you know, we should be able to generate savings. And, you know, on the previous slide, it might not be $5 million, it might be lower, it might be higher. But again, even on the calls, we had a very detailed call this morning, they still reasonably believe that that's an achievable mark.
Perfect, good. Now with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and second the item. I'm actually intrigued, and I think that at some point in the budget and audit committees of the spring, the first quarter, maybe a report back on how, what, how successful it was and what it was, and using this approach today.
Okay. Very, very, very good. Let's not call the, let's not do a roll call. Let's call by one member at a time here. Go ahead.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Aye.
Councilmember Laloie. Councilmember Talamontes.
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Councilmember Maple.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Geta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bang.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. All right. Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much, Brian. Thank you. John. Saving the city money. That's good. All right, members, that concludes the agenda. Do we have council ideas and questions or public testimony and items not on the agenda?
Mayor, I have no speakers for matters not on the agenda.
Okay. I don't see any council comments. Do we have, what time is the closed session?
So if you want to add, closed session is at 4:00 p.m.
4:00 p.m. So we will adjourn this afternoon's meeting, closed session at 4:00, and then the regular session will begin at 5:00 o'clock. We are adjourned.